Mr. Powell, we'll start with you. In your role as a trustee, how will you help ensure students will be successful? And how will that be measured?
Well, measuring student success is something that we need to examine very closely. Success is based on retention and persistency through completion. That's been a key performance indicator for years. Use of AI and the artificial intelligence can help with that. We have a diverse group of people going to Butler County. First-generation students, underserved students, working adults all require different resources to succeed. To tackle the issue, we need to define what a student's success means to us based on our mission and student goals. And there are five common parts to that. Retention rates, graduation rates, time to completion, academic performance, and tracking educational goals. For our purposes, I am proposing that we focus on the student's educational goal to be more indicative of the student's success. Maybe not an associate's degree. We're finding more and more kids today are looking more at the vocational aspects of things and wanting to be able to go to work right away without spending a couple of years in school. In the vocational area, retention is met upon certification. There's a reporting group that every college sends information to. The integrated post-secondary educational data system is maintained by the Department of Education in DC. By all measures, as reports come to them, it appears Butler County is in the, community colleges is in the middle of the road. 61% of the full-time first-year students in the area are considered retaining. But Butler County is failing in the graduation rate. We're sitting at 28% in certification. We're sitting at 1% according to their reports. That's down from 32% in 2014. That can and should be improved. So those searching for colleges to attend see this when they look online. That's not a good report to draw people to. I believe change is needed out at the college.
Mr. Rhodes, your comments on that question?
Can you repeat the question for me?
I can. In your role as a trustee, how will you help ensure students will be successful? And how will that be measured?
Okay, so our goal, the goal of the trustees is to oversee the college's administration. So we should be relying on the experts that we have at the college that have done higher ed all of their life to be helping to tackle those questions with oversight from the board. Now, in terms of those goals, scholarship opportunities are a huge thing. The students, college needs to be affordable. That's not just how we control tuition rates, but also what other funding opportunities are available for students. There's a critical analysis of course offerings that are available to students so that students can get the courses they need when they need them to stay on track towards their graduation goals. Alternative teaching mechanisms have been something that the college has embraced wonderfully since the pandemic, and it's now become a regular part of the college environment. When I say that, I mean, it used to be everybody showed up in class and you're there in person. Now, remote learning is a huge thing, and some students want that. That's their goal is, they don't want to be in a classroom for their classes. They want to be able to sit at home, do it online, take a class on their own time schedule. Over, I'll get the percentage wrong, it's a majority of Butler students are part-time. So they are working, they're parenting, they're doing something else most of their time, and the college is there to provide an educational resource for them when they have the time to take advantage of it. And being able to enhance those opportunities is certainly a goal that we want to continue to grow. Let's see here. Graduation rates, we do follow that. The college follows that right now. It's something that the board is made aware of. Graduation rates have to be, you have to recognize and put it in context, though. Mr. Powell mentioned a percentage. What that percentage doesn't take into account is that part-time students often don't graduate on time because they don't finish their educational goal in two years or three years, which is what the metric says you should finish to be considered graduating on time. It doesn't mean that we aren't fulfilling the need that that student has in terms of higher education, but it's not fitting within the paradigm that a particular reviewing entity might be looking at. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rockman, in your view, or in your role as a trustee, how will you help ensure students will be successful? And how will that be measured?
Yeah, so I would agree with the board oversees the administration. And I would also agree that private scholarships are important to academic success and to On retention, completion, and graduation rates, I might have gone to college a little more recently than my fellow candidates. But when I was in school, it was getting the important things that mattered. It was getting the important things that mattered for your certification or for your degree. When it was pre-med, you had to go through and do certain courses. A prime example is physics used to be required for the MCAT. It's not anymore. So knocking out something important was a requirement, and it took some time, and I put it off till senior year. So I think that empowering students with scholarships and enabling them to focus on their core studies to get their certificate or their associate's degree is the key part. And as far as the board goes, the board oversees the administration. Thank you.
Very good. Mary Martha, do you need me to repeat the question?
Please.
Very good. In your role as a trustee, how will you help ensure students will be successful? And how will that be measured?
Well, the success of our students really should be the reason we're all here tonight. Because of my last four years as a member of the Butler's Board of Trustees, along with the career spent in education at both the K-12 and community college levels, I understand more the significance of this topic in the context of our college's mission, which is to prepare students for lifetime success through affordable education. First and foremost, measuring student success is not a one-size-fits-all. We must recognize our students come from diverse backgrounds and have a wide range of goals and aspirations. Our approach to measuring success should be multifaceted and tailored to meet the unique needs of each student. Now, one measure of student success is retention rates, which means how well we keep them on campus and enrolled. Butler continues to monitor the number of students who continue their education from one semester to the next. With our retention rates steady or on the rise, we see that Butler students are engaged, satisfied with their educational experience, and progressing toward their goals. Another significant measurement is completion rates, which include the number of students who earn degrees, certificates, or transfer to four-year institutions. While not all students follow the same path, the Butler Board should strive to empower staff and faculty in their efforts to ensure that students who start their journey with us have clear pathways to achieving their outcomes. We should look at the success of our students in the job market. Are they finding gainful employment that aligns with their education and career goals? In fact, I recently had my knee replaced where I was hospitalized overnight. 10 days later, I contracted sepsis and was in St. Francis Hospital for four days. Every one of my nurses, except for one, graduated from Butler Community College Nursing Program. That was, it was fantastic. Of course, my cheerleader Kyle was always in the room asking the same question. Where did you go to school? And why? They told us about wonderful stories about their education and how important we made them feel. It made me feel good to know that I was in good hands. I am proud to know they all have found success in the healthcare business. Now, these measurements can't all be quantitative, though. We also need to look at qualitative information like student satisfaction, student engagement, and personal growth. Butler students are leaving our institution not only with degrees and certificates, but also are more informed, critical thinkers, and responsible members of society. Thank you.
Mary Martha, we're going to start this next question with you.
Okay.
Don't go anywhere. In your view, what is the overarching value of the college to our county and to the region?
Thank you for that question, Phil. I appreciate the opportunity to highlight the significant value of Butler Community College and what it brings to our community. I've witnessed firsthand the positive impact that our college has on our county, both economically and educationally. One of the most significant values that Butler College brings to our county is its robust economic impact. The conservative estimate of over $46 million in total direct economic impact from college operations, employee spending, and student spending speaks volumes about the positive financial influence of the college on our local businesses and communities. This financial contribution ripples through our economy, supporting businesses, creating jobs, and contributing to the overall prosperity of Butler County. When new businesses want to set up business in Butler County, they are excited to know we have a community college to help train and educate their workers. Now, speaking of jobs, Butler Community College is the largest employer in our county. That means that many of our friends and neighbors are gainfully employed by the college, ensuring that they can provide for their families and contribute to our local economy. The stability of these jobs helps create a resilient community. Butler not only provides employment opportunities, but also attracts skilled professionals to our communities. In addition to boosting our local economy and providing jobs, Butler is also a responsible steward of taxpayer dollars. Our mill levy tax, lower than it has been in nearly 40 years, showcases the college's dedication to providing quality education while being mindful of the financial well-being of our citizens. Lowering the mill levy by 38% over the last six years and reducing the tax request by over $2 million underscores our commitment to fiscal prudence and supporting our local taxpayers. And I want to stress this point. We did not exceed revenue-neutral rate, as quoted by my opponent. The importance of a strong local community college in the long-term economic development cannot be overstated. Butler Community College is the second-largest community in Kansas, and it's a point of pride for our community. Despite our size, we have maintained the second-lowest mill levy among the 19 community colleges in the state, and this is a testament to our efficient use of resources and commitment. Our legislature has not kept their end of community college funding. If they had funded us, SB 345 is the law, we must have, we would have gained an extra $36 million in 20 years. Thank you.
George? You want the question again?
Yes, sir. I'd appreciate that.
In your view, what is the overarching value of the college to the county, Butler County, and to the area, to the region?
Yeah, so on a personal level, I appreciate the college because I can hire the students who are going to school there, whether it's fence or wrangling calves. It's always beneficial to have the students that are working towards their HVAC certification or plumbing. I look forward to educating and training my own children here in Butler, and the college helps equip them for their future. I think a lot of businesses do love the community college. I wish more of those businesses would be in Butler County and help contribute to those taxes. At the state level, the legislature is never going to do anything. This is a local issue, not a state issue. You're not going to get the supermajority of Republicans to vote to increase their mill levies on their own citizens for our community college that we volunteered for in the early 20th century. It's never going to happen. The state's never going to do it. So I think it's an extremely awesome boon to have and to be able to send our children there. Thank you. But the state's not going to do it. Thanks.
Okay. Forrest?
So I guess I look at this, you said overarching value. I look at it as twofold, and I'll try not to echo too much of what Mary Martha said, although our views are very much aligned on this issue. You can look first at the economic benefit. Mary Martha was alluding to a study that was done from an independent organization back in 2019 that found the direct economic impact that Butler provides, that Butler College provides to the county is about $46 million. That's between money that Butler spends within the county, money that Butler students spend when they're in the county. That recognizes about half of Butler's full-time and part-time employees reside in Butler County. And for District 3, where I represent, which is El Dorado and the communities, the communities to the north, a ton of our El Dorado campus employees reside here in El Dorado. So that's a benefit that's directly benefiting our local economy. And it's being done economically. My opponent tonight said taxes stayed the same or gave up or gone up. I don't know what numbers he's looking at. I've got the mill levy numbers right here. You can look at them. They're publicly available. Our mill levy in the four years that I've been on the board has gone down 30%. We haven't increased at all. We've been revenue-neutral for the last two years, and in fact, this year, we just passed a budget that was below revenue-neutral. We actually gave money back. So by revenue-neutral, what that means is, is we're essentially not accepting any of the valuation increases. So when you know that property taxes in El Dorado, and they went up in the last year on average, I think the median was 15% was residential property increase. If the mill levy stays the same, you're going to pay 15% more. Well, what we did was, we backed that 15% out of the mill. So we're taking the same amount of money. In fact, this month, we took about $170,000 less than what we did last year in tax money. So it's just flat-out false to say that taxes have been the same or much less that they've gone up. So the other component to value that I see is the value to Butler County students. We have articulation agreements with every high school in the county that provides a smooth pathway for them to take courses onsite at their high school for college credit. There's five classes that are approved, their core educational classes, 15 hours, that students can take for zero tuition. All they have to do is pay the fee for it. That's a benefit that we're providing, that's a value that's being provided to the Butler taxpayers, and in this case, not just the taxpayers, it's all the Butler citizens. Because whether you pay property taxes or not, your students, your kids have a right to take advantage of those benefits. We've also got early college academies ingrained at several of the high schools, and we're the only community college in the state to have early college academies. Those give kids the opportunity to not only graduate with their associates, they graduate with their associate's degree at the same time as their high school diploma.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a different approach than what has been brought up.
I'm looking at the value of the college, and I see a number of areas where Butler has great value, particularly to the students. The choice of Butler versus university depends upon your overall plan for higher education. And there are many benefits to beginning your education at Butler. You can complete your education in a vocational field in a very short time. Or you can save on tuition costs by fulfilling your general education requirements here rather than going straight to a four-year university. Academically, students learn just as much here as in a university, but classes are much smaller, allowing for more individual interaction and constructive discussions. With lower tuition, Butler is much more affordable, about half that of a university. But Butler students also save money by living at home. Also, Butler offers students flexibility, something they don't get in a four-year college. This is ideal for students with jobs or families, as was mentioned earlier. One can schedule around work or raising children if they're in that situation. Flexibility of the schedule is not something that's found in most universities. For those wanting a higher degree, Butler offers a path to a four-year college while avoiding a good chunk of student debt, something that we hear a lot about today. And even if you stop here, don't go any further, the payoff of earning an associate's degree or a vocational certification here at Butler is considerable. Studies have shown that the median average salary of a full-time worker is about $8,000 more for someone than for someone who has not gotten an associate degree or a vocational certification. So when the question about the value of the college comes up, I'm looking at what Butler is doing for those students and helping them get jobs that are meaningful and pay well. That's the value of the college.
Okay. Thank you, sir. George, we're going to start this next question with you.
All right.
Butler Community College will be celebrating its 100th birthday or anniversary here in a few years, although it's had some other names along the way. What do you see as the future focus of the college? What does Butler Community College look like in 10 years?
Well, I think the community college in 10 years looks like a community college that main ROI is focused on Butler. I mean, there's lots of ROI market studies. You can do it based on marketing. You can do it based on profitability. And, you know, I see the college in 10 years being highly focused and high positive ROI for Butler County residents. I mean, once we get there, 100 years ago, Butler was almost entirely fueling a world war with its fuel. And, you know, I see us being bigger and having more roofs and having more families in the county, having a wider tax base, and seeing all ships rise.
Thank you. Mary Martha?
Repeat the question, please, Phil.
Of course. Butler Community College will be celebrating its 100th birthday here in a few years. What do you see as the future focus of the college? And what does the college look like in 10 years?
I firmly believe our college's mission as an open-door institution that inspires and prepares students for lifetime success through innovation, affordable, quality education is not only essential, but also aligned with the values which have made all of us successful. I see that continuing. I recognize that there are differing viewpoints within the board regarding the college's future, with some advocating program cuts and a narrow focus on Butler County students. While it's vital to ensure this, the long-term viability and success of our college, I firmly believe that our mission to serve all students who come to us, even those outside of the county, is crucial to our continued success. Something we all need to understand is the presence of out-district students contributes significantly to our college's vitality and capacity to provide programs that support local workforce needs in critical areas of growth. When we look at out-of-district enrollment, it's clear they are drawn to programs that we offer such as nursing, business administration, allied health, information technology, behavioral science, education, and engineering manufacturing. These programs thrive in large part because of the participation of these students. If we eliminate or hinder the opportunity for students from outside Butler County to enroll, it will negatively impact the sustainability of these valuable programs. My vision for the future of Butler is centered on innovation in teaching, learning, and working. I believe we will see different class sizes. I think more will go online, and it's going to be a different look here the more years that we get into this. With more than 60% of our students part-time, we must continue to create pathways that allow them fast-track their education, such as credit for prior learning, apprenticeships, and internships that provide credit toward degrees and certificates through on-job training. In conclusion, my vision for Butler's future is one of continued leadership in higher education. This includes outstanding academic programs, thriving athletic and fine arts programs, vibrant student organizations, and a strong commitment to community service. By embracing our mission as an innovative, affordable, and accessible institution, we are welcoming students from beyond our county. We can continue to provide and enrich educational experiences that prepares our students for success in an ever-changing world. I believe this is the path to ensure both our short-term viability and long-term excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. Forrest?
So the, I don't think the, I guess, would you repeat the question, Phil? Just so I make sure that you have the two parts.
Of course. What do you see as the future focus of the college? And what does the college look like in 10 years?
Okay. I think the first question is easy to answer. The second one, not so much. I don't think there is any doubt that the focus of the college has been, currently is, and will always be, the students. That's what we're here to do. We're here to support the students. That's in the middle of our mission statement. It's at the heart of our three-year strategic plan that we renew every three years. That will always be the case. Now, what the college looks like in 10 years is harder to predict. As Mary Martha said, the learning environment is changing. Just what we've seen since the pandemic, I mentioned this a little bit before, but I don't think it was pandemic-driven. The focus of students is different now than it was before, and we have to continue to adapt to provide learning opportunities that meet them where they want to learn, and that may be a little bit different. But we also have to recognize that we're at a decision point now in terms of whether the college, what path the college takes. And I know, I'm not making this about my opponent, but I think it's important to point out that there is a fundamental philosophical difference between the folks that are running for this position in this election. And the group that my opponent belongs to wants to shrink the college. That is the net effect of what they want to do. It's geised in property tax reductions, but they want the college to be smaller. They want to pull out of Sedgwick County. They want to alienate Sedgwick County students. Now, it's arguably for the benefit of Butler County students, but as Mary Martha said, the Sedgwick County students represent about 78%, or excuse me, out-of-county students represent about 78% of our enrollment. And on one level, you think, well, it's Butler Community College. Why are all the Sedgwick County kids coming? Well, those Sedgwick County kids, their tuition, the state aid that we get based on their tuition is providing all the programs that are benefiting Butler. We have the premier institution that we have right now because they're helping to pay for it. And if you pull back and you cut them out, yes, we've now got a college that might be it's just focused on Butler, but it's going to be a whole lot smaller. It's not going to be able to provide Butler students with the same level of benefit and education as they get right now. And that's the question we have for what happens 10 years from now. Thank you.
Mr. Powell, what do you see as the future focus of the college? What's it look like in 10 years?
Well, first off, I agree that our mission is to help students acquire the skills they need to be successful in today's job markets. I disagree in what was just said about what I want to see. I don't want to see the college shrink. I want to see it grow. With the implementation of some of my ideas and the addition of additional vocational certifications, which seems to be the driving impetus for a lot of kids coming out of high school, they want to have something that they can go to work at and make money at today instead of four years down the road. The idea that the community college was simply there to be a feeder for the universities is kind of old-school. And I'm an older person, so I know what old-school is all about. I believe that we can change the downward enrollment. The direction that we've seen over the past four or five years, we've lost 25% to 27% of our enrollment in that period of time. And again, there's a reduced pool of students, but we're not really going after everybody that's out there. I would like to see our faculty, our staff, going out to all of these schools, not only in Butler County, but in surrounding counties, and promoting Butler County Community College as a destination to go to, that they can get the certifications that they want, that they can get the stair-step to. they can get the stair-step to a four-year college that they're looking for in some instances. But again, vocational seems to be big attraction for a lot of schools out there. We want to put in place programs that students want and need for them to move into today's job market and in the future. If we expand in that direction, I see Butler County Community College growing drastically over where we have seen reductions. We're losing to the competition out there, and it is competition because we have a smaller group of people that we're trying to get to come to us. I don't want to see us decline or, I want to keep Butler as a vibrant, growing source to success that we see in the future, that the students coming here can see as a future for what they want. I want Butler to be a tremendously large college in a few years.
Okay. Thank you. Last question, an important one. One of the characteristics of any successful board is each member's ability to collaborate, to work collaboratively, to affect other board members to achieve other positive outcomes. Tell us how you will add value to the Board of Trustees if elected. Forrest, your first.
So I think the value I bring is, I'm not an educator. I mean, we have a very strong, we have a strong educational background on the board, and that's wonderful. I'm not. I bring a different perspective, a different look at the issues. And that is not at all meant to disparage educators, not for one second, but the view is different. What we need is, and I think there's a level of respect that we need to have in interpersonal communications with one another, and that supports collaboration. And when the respect level goes away, the ability to have productive collaborative discussions is significantly hindered. We've promoted over the last four years that Mary Martha and I have been on the board, we've gone, we've separated our work sessions from the board meetings to be able to have, it used to be the board meetings ran from 4:30 until late at night because the work session followed the board meeting. So you had, I think, the focus of the work session may have been, may have been inhibited by the fact that you'd already been there for several hours doing the board meeting. So we've moved those work sessions to a different timeframe, a different day, which I think helps us to focus on the issues at hand. We've brought in outside sources from national agencies. The trade group that's, that the community college is a part of has helped support and facilitate discussion amongst the board, amongst the Board of Trustees to try to find common pathways. And you're not going to have all, I mean, we bring seven different viewpoints to every issue, and we're aligned on some, and we're not going to be aligned on all, and there's nothing necessarily wrong with that. But we ought to be able to have a productive discussion, even though we don't all necessarily agree with what the answer would be. And some of those workshops that we've done and that I would propose that we continue to do periodically help to try to bridge some of those, some of those gaps. But above all, it's respect. It's dealing with one another respectfully, and I pride myself on that having been a focus in the two years that I've been board chair and would hope that I get the opportunity to not serve as board chair, but to continue to serve on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. David, one of the characteristics of any successful board is each member's ability to collaborate effectively with other board members to achieve positive outcomes. Tell us how you will add value to the Board of Trustees if elected.
Well, I, it's a good question, one that I don't think is hard to answer. Having had a lot of experience in business and working with people in the sales area, you have to be able to talk to them about things that make sense to you and to them. But, you know, we're also in a situation where we're elected by the people out there that we are working for. And if we don't represent those people and their views and express those views at the board meetings, then we're not doing what we were elected to do. So it's important that everybody understands that when we're making a point, it's because that point has been brought to us many, many, many times, and we need to make sure that comes across to the other people on the board. There's many areas where common sense should be a deciding factor, but again, I've viewed, I haven't been to any of these meetings, but fortunately, they're all recorded, and so you can go back and look as many years back as you want to practically. And I've seen it's kind of our way or the highway type situation where there's too many votes that are four to three or five to two. It's not a collaboration issue. It's more of an issue where people are trying to get everybody to understand that they're speaking for the people they represent. Budget is part of that, a big part of that. Another big part of it that I think was extremely sad to see is something that went back to changing the way the games have been played. I reviewed notes from a 2022 meeting where information was requested, and it was slow-walked to the people that were asking for it. You slow-walk it by saying it takes time to prepare what we need to be accurate. Maybe it's something we consider sensitive information, but I believe any report presented to the board at a public meeting should be public information and immediately available to the public. The newspaper shouldn't have to say they're going to do a FOIA request in order to get information that's presented at a public meeting that should be public record. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Mary Martha? One of the characteristics of any successful board is each member's ability to collaborate effectively with other board members to achieve positive outcomes. Tell us how you will add value to the Board of Trustees if reelected.
Thank you, Phil. As trustees, it is our responsibility to serve our community and support the mission and vision of the college. With that in mind, making decisions based on available facts, voting our honest convictions, and upholding the final majority decision of the board are fundamental to our role. We are here to represent the best interest of our students and our community, and that responsibility should guide our actions. The Higher Learning Commission, and I will refer to it as the HLC, we had reaffirmation accreditation in July 2023. They affirmed us for another few years, but it's a significant achievement that demonstrates our dedication to meeting or exceeding the highest educational standards. This accreditation ensures that our students receive a high-quality education and that their degrees and certificates are respected and recognized nationwide. Well, we had a hiccup in that report. The Higher Learning Commission watched several of our board meetings. They observed behaviors of certain trustees which were unpleasant to observe. We got written up for this negative behavior, and now the trustees as a whole have to write a report back to HLC how we will fix this problem. We need to become a collaborative board where decisions are respected. We must agree to disagree and not tear one another down. You know, I'm going to stop right there because that was, that's the meat of it.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You bet.
George?
Yes, sir. So I would agree with Dave, and I think that transparency is key. The elected officials are the voice of the people, and we don't need cora requests. So whether it's the books or going into executive session or whatever it needs to be, there's very small, small portions. I think transparency and being the voice of the people is pretty much encompasses that whole issue. That last part of the question, what do you bring? Butler County's an ag county, and I'm an ag guy. So there you go. Thank you.
Very good. I'll now ask each of you to give a two-minute closing statement. And George, we'll start with you.
All right. Well, I don't need two minutes. I appreciate all your time. Thank you, Chamber. This has been great, and I appreciate it. Yeah, I think we all have different opinions on a few things, but I really want what's best for Butler County. I want to raise my kids here. I want them to stay here once they're done being educated, and I don't want to export them, export them to a different state or county. I do want to lower property taxes, and I do want the college to thrive. I want to increase private funding and decrease public funding. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Mary Martha?
I appreciate you all being here tonight. I do want us to remember that the state of Kansas is responsible for funding community colleges. They have not done it in 20 years. As my opponent said, it's down the drain. No. No, we need to lobby Senator Mike Fag, Representative Will Carpenter, Representative Christie Williams, and ask them to fund our community colleges. In 20 years, we have lost over $36 million. Now, folks, that's a lot of money. So I want us to get active with the community and start charging up to peek in, say, then change this. Change this for the betterment of all of our community colleges here in Kansas. I am excited and I am thrilled to be up here representing the Butler County, and I think competition is good, so I'm glad to see David and George running. We do have different views, but I respect them. That's one thing we all need to learn how to do, is respect and honor each other's opinions. I ask for your vote. I'm anxious to do another four years. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
I, again, appreciate the fact that the Chamber put this together and has had us all up here to give our views. I've visited with many, many people, a lot of whom I taught years ago, and actually coached their grandkids. That's why I got out of coaching. I just couldn't see going much further after 35 years. But every one of them is saying our taxes are too high, and so that's why it had become a priority with me. Are there places where we could cut at Butler? Yes, there are. There are some, again, throw-money attitudes to correct the problem. Our advertising should be coming from us to the people and not paying a half million dollars out for something that has generated no success. The mill levy, yeah, it's come down, but so is the valuation has gone up, so it's really kind of a wash. When I look at my property taxes bill, it just makes me shiver. I own property out in the country where I live. I think I bring a different perspective. I think I bring to the board some ideas that will help us grow and change the direction it's going. We do need change in the, in the direction that it's going right now. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Forrest?
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Thanks for those that are either watching live or will be watching on the recording. I appreciate you taking the time to, to learn more about, about these issues and would encourage you to keep, keep learning, keep asking questions. Don't take what someone says at face value because oftentimes statements that are made, as we saw this evening, that are just flat-out incorrect, and if you don't look into it, you, you won't know that. The college is not broken, and anyone that tells you otherwise doesn't know what they're talking about. Are there things that we can do better? Absolutely. Like any organization, you can always, constant improvement should be our goal, and at Butler Community College in the four years that I've been on the trustees, that, that has been the goal, and I hope that you will allow me four more years to, to continue that goal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Forrest, and thank you all for coming this evening and sharing your thoughtful statements and answers to our questions. And thank you to everyone who attended this evening's candidate forum or you who watched on TV. Please remember to vote this November, and from City Hall right here in El Dorado, Kansas, good night, everybody.[1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01][1798.01]